Welcome to the Thursday, June 12th, 2025, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 6:00 PM and we are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We have late cam recording. Is anyone else recording this evening? Hearing none. We do have a quorum this evening. We're waiting on a couple of members to show up, but we can get started with Mr. Cabral, Mr. Lodge and myself. We also have Town Council, Amy Quetzal present, as well as our clerk Cathy Murray. The first item on the agenda tonight is the A&R Plan for 150 Rhode Island Road. Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm Bernard Parati with Riverhawk Lancy Bay. I prepared the A&R Plan. Lance Mary put the plan together. What we're looking to do is create two new buildable lots. And there's an existing house on the land as well, and that's on its own lot.
Were you gonna locate? You said that the existing property has town water, but were you gonna locate the septic on that lot for us?
We added that. I received the comments and when I did, the existing house is actually serviced by a well and it's a septic which I show on this revised copy of the plan. The new lines, the lot had a previous configuration that had been, so the new lines are actually further away. The new line is actually further away from what was previous there. But those existing septic, existing well is shown. The abutment to the south is serviced by water, by town water. There's a newer septic with the newer building that was just recently constructed. That septic's shown and the other abutment property to the southeast is a solar farm.
Okay. Yeah, and it's really just the property that's being A&R that we'd wanna see where the existing well and septic are. So they're not ending up on someone else's new lot.
Gotcha. Oh, okay.
Yeah. Did anybody have any questions, comments, concerns from the board?
The revised plan is right next to it.
Yeah, that's where the septic is.
Thank you. I didn't see it. So that's the only thing. So you didn't have to change those lot lines then?
No, I did not change the lot lines. I just added that on. I had not shown it was the, that house had been up previously on its own lot and there was a previous A&R done about a year, two years ago that kinda combined this all back into one lot.
We're not making this up, okay? We are.
And then these lot lines with the building on the south, I know that they had, they had to land swap too as part of that construction, right? A while ago, wasn't that?
Correct. Yeah, that was like about, I think, a little over a year ago possibly too. Yeah, they conveyed a portion of that land to the southerly land owned by Sikorsky.
Right. Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought the industrial and residential line was almost eaten up by that, but maybe it wasn't completely. Okay.
May I, I went back through the description, the town's description of that to,
To verify.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I remember looking at that before. That was right when I started on the plan. I remember seeing that. But that's fine.
No other questions?
Nope.
Good evening, Jack. We're just on the first agenda item, Jack, for the A&R.
150?
I was gonna ask them the same thing. Go ahead.
Jack, did you have any questions or comments or concerns about the A&R? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the A&R?
I'll make a motion to approve the A&R for 150 Rhode Island Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. One sec. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna skip around a little bit and bring up Agenda Item Number 7, Public Safety Regarding Elevators in Multi-story Units Discussion. We have the fire chief here this evening. Come on up. So we got an email from you.
Yeah. So basically, if, you know, fire protection, fire prevention, things like that, it's a partnership. And there is, basically what the email was, tried to identify, is that sometimes within the code, there are limitations to what can be required. And basically what I was hoping to accomplish is to raise the awareness of the planning board, to seek opportunities and look for opportunities to motivate and to require developers or applicants to formulate or construct their projects in a way that causes the least amount of burden on the fire department. And in one such example, there was a recent senior living apartment, apartment building that was constructed that lacked elevator service. So that, when I look at that building, I look at a building that we're statistically more likely to respond to. We're more likely to have significant medical emergencies there. And so then I'm thinking about the compromised medical care that we're gonna provide because we have to carry the patients down the stairs instead of administering care to them. So think about a CPR in progress. Basically, we have to stop providing CPR to that person while we carry them down the stairs. And any interruption in CPR decreases the likelihood of their survival. I think about the potential injury to our responders on some days when we have three responders on duty. So there's a stronger or a greater likelihood that these responders will be injured in the course of delivering their services to these residents. And so I understand that the planning board's limited to the scope of their authority and they can't require things that are beyond their authority. But I will make the commitment to you that if there are opportunities or problems that are created by projects that come before this board, I will identify those problems as best I can. And I'm just trying to maybe make you aware of why, you know, what my angle is, provide context to some of the communications that come your way. Does that make sense?
I think it's important. Yeah, it's very important, you know, communication and not just, you know, the communication, but to try to dig it and see if there is something that can be done to help or assist and alleviate any of that. I know there was concern from residents and board members. So I think as long as you're sharing that, you know, with us and bringing it to our attention, we'll definitely do, I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
There's a good number of developers and builders out there that are, they're just, they're really good people. If you bring these concerns to their attention, they modify the project to help, you know, help alleviate the problem. But it's not all in the case. So it really is a team effort. You know, I've enjoyed really better communication with the planning board in the last few years, which I've benefited from, public safety's benefited from, should I say. And I just, you know, we've gone back and forth about that specific building with the elevator problem. And I just wanted to show up tonight and help you understand the problem. And I realize that you have limited authority in some of these issues, but I'm not gonna stop reaching out to you and trying to make situations better. It's, I have an obligation to do that. And the way I interpret fire code, the way I enforce fire code is basically it's black and white, it's written down. And as the authority having jurisdiction, I have no problem interpreting it a way that serves the greater good in our community here in Lakeville. My job is to advocate for public safety and to make everybody in this town a little bit safer if I can. And I have no problem sticking my neck out a little bit to accomplish that. And I think, you know, I think if, you know, this board has that opportunity to, when it comes to these close decisions, that's basically what I'm asking for.
Sure.
Chief and Michelle, have me understand this. The one specific issue I'm talking about is the apartment complex next to CVS. And they built that thing and they had no elevators in it. I guess my question is, being 80 years old, you want me to climb three flights of stairs with my groceries? I mean, give me a break. I mean, this is ridiculous. And I guess it's because of state requirement, right?
Well, so, yeah, so.
So we can't override that?
So, Amy's here if she wants to help sort of guide the.
Help me.
It's a state requirement.
So in a way, we within the sound.
It's in the ADA that doesn't require it on a three-story building.
Unless there's a, unless there's an ADA specific unit on the third floor or something. But no, they don't. They generally do not require it. No.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, having kind of gone through these things in the past myself, you know, to, you know, who expects a developer to come in and actually wanna do a building without an elevator? You know, I agree, it's a foolish sort of thing. Is there anything, probably the best question for you, is there anything that we could put in the zoning ordinance or in the town bylaws to just specifically say three-story residential buildings, you know, or multifamily buildings require an elevator?
No, most likely it would be preempted by the Architectural Access Board, which is state regulation.
Yeah, but it would be a requirement beyond what they require. So you're saying we can't, we can't have more stringent requirements than they do?
You could try. Sure.
They can override it, right? The developer could go to the state and override it, override it, right? And all those old folks have to climb three flights of stairs. And this is a specific instance of the deficiency.
Or the units don't sell because there's no elevator.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I, you know, thought we were gonna be looking at down the road is a developer coming back to us and saying, I can't rent these units. Nobody wants to rent them. We need to eliminate the over 55 from this building, you know. And the fact that he may have been doing it on purpose specifically to kind of get past that and get us to give him a variance.
I guess the only, the only thing that I would, it would be very difficult to make a bylaw or a local ordinance that addresses a specific problem because there's seven or eight other problems that I recognize. So an example of that was when the senior living, the 55-plus building was built down at Betty's Neck. The access that was approved was code compliant, but the access was problematic because at the rear of the building, we're four stories up, which exceeded all of our ground ladder capability. The developer was proactive when I pointed out the deficiency and funded the purchase of ladders that would reach the third floor, the fourth floor, really the fourth floor. So, I mean, in most cases, developers, if you speak to them about, in logical ways, about the hazards they've created by the way they've constructed or designed their buildings, they respond to it. But unfortunately, not everybody's responded that way. And I don't, I can't identify the leverage point that you might have. I can't tell you the problem that you might solve. But what I can is I can raise your awareness to consider our perspective, the fire, the first responder perspective, which you guys have been great about. I watch the meetings regularly and I hear the fire department and the police department brought up pretty frequently and it's appreciated. But if I just prevent one more problem by showing up here tonight, then it's, then we've accomplished something.
And I wonder if, just reaching out to our state reps, because now with 3A coming in and maybe more multifamily buildings across the state, maybe just reaching out to the state reps and letting them know to help spring awareness. And we can't be the only town, I would expect, struggling with something like this. I'm surprised that there are no local bylaws, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, ADA is federal, right?
There's also the Architectural Access Board, which is state.
Yeah, but, yeah, okay, there are another layer in all of this, but.
I don't know the differences between, you know, the federal and the state, but there is a state, you know, there's a state access board.
Yeah, but I, their requirements are contained solely within the building code. And, you know, when this came up, I wasn't even on the board yet, but somebody brought it to my attention and I'm digging it out. And the only thing regarding that elevator and three-story building is in ADA. You know, and there's no coverage for it in the building code. I'm surprised that life safety code doesn't cover it either.
It's something that, you know, we talk about Kensington or Sterling, those buildings aren't served by elevators as well. So it's been an ongoing problem. And so, you know, we've had one instance where we had somebody that was a larger individual that was critically ill and we actually used the ladder truck. They had to use the ladder truck to get him out of the third floor due to the lack of an elevator. So it's, it's just these problems that affect first responders, expect the outcome, they affect the outcome of these medical emergencies that, you know, basically the Phil Mighty Dollar wins out. You know, and that's what it comes down to, the cost of installing an elevator wins out over public safety, the well-being of our first responders. And it's unfortunate. It really is unfortunate.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, I guess at this point, just, you know, keep us informed. Let us know when you do encounter an issue and then go going forward if anything comes before us so we have an opportunity to look at it again. Then definitely, you know, reach out at that time again as well.
I won't be shy.
Yes. And so there is one more thing that we have on our agenda later this evening. It's number 11, Site Plan Review. We have the third bullet point is Fire Station Site Plan Discussion. To waive fees, possible vote. Figured let's do have this in case anybody had a question for the fire chief police here. So we have the site plan application and because it's a town project, we've been asked to waive the fees. It seems standard procedure to waive the fees, but I didn't know if anybody had a question for the fire chief about that.
The only one that would have to be covered would be peer review?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, the peer review will be, they'll have to, the town will have to pay for peer review. Or engineering review. Why would you do peer review on a town project? Wasn't there a question about peer review being done? Was it just an engineering review? Not peer review? Yeah, I'm not sure.
We haven't had any discussion as far as on our side about peer review. And as far as another board, there was a requirement and there was some unhappy people because it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to us. We, you know, we're hiring independent contractors to develop these programs for us. There is no profit per se, profit motivation to try to get around rules and do things incorrectly. So it seemed like a, it seemed like a waste of money on our part, in our opinion. It was taking money away from the fire station, from the project and was ultimately didn't serve the greater good for Lakeville.
So is there a peer review gonna be done on a portion of it or?
We have to, we've been required to do a peer review as far as the stormwater drainage.
Okay. Just to like review the engineering?
Yeah.
I've never heard of that. Oh, okay. You're already paying an engineer? The town's already paying an engineer?
Is the town hiring a third party to review the design as the owner to have, for their checks?
I mean, also is there, is there a conflict? Because the town is essentially the applicant and the town is the peer reviewer.
Well, and is there any vehicle where we can do away with it?
You don't, you're not required to do peer review. It's your choice.
All right.
And it wouldn't be peer review under us, as far as I know, because I think it must have well ends that they'll be doing it.
So typically, I.
So, yeah, so you're all set. You don't have to. Yeah, so we don't have to worry about the peer review.
And I don't know if it's relevant to the conversation, please cut me off if it's not, but, you know, the project's about to go out to bed and prior to it going out to bed, it is being peer reviewed?
That's what I mean. That's what I'm saying before the bed, being peer reviewed anyway.
Yeah. But that's part of the structure. That's part of the common practice for a public project.
And as a board, we haven't encountered an instance like this.
Right, right.
So, I mean, this is.
This is board, yeah.
Yeah. It was a good question.
One other thing too is, was pointed out to me by another fire chief going through this is, when I pull the fire chiefs, very few fire chiefs have had to pay a planning board application fee. Very few fire chiefs have had to pay to get anything, you know, third-party reviewed. The one that did was angry, was doubly angry because the engineering company that did the review upcharged on the fee that was associated with the review.
That's crazy.
So it was actually, because their point was that, you know, paying the application fee was a wash because it was just taking money out of one thing and putting the other. But it was actually a net loss to the town because the engineer upcharged on the fee that was covered.
I mean, I don't mind saving a few tax dollars by waiving the fees. If everybody's in agreement, we can take a vote on that.
Yep.
If someone wants to make that motion.
Make a motion to waive the fees for the site plan review of the fire station.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You guys are all so thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Chief O'Brien, before you leave, thank you for everything your team does. Keep our town safe. We really appreciate it. Honestly.
Thank you for that comment. I'm very fortunate. We have a great group down there.
And we're excited to see the station.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Excited to have you over there soon.
All right. Well, so I didn't think that the public hearings could open until 7:00, but we have our second agenda. Everybody's here. Amy, am I able to take them now? It wasn't specified, but.
So you, so did you, have you opened any of the public hearings?
It has been opened our last meeting, so the first.
Two and four, yeah.
So you continued it to the, today?
Correct.
Was there, did you continue it to a time?
Was there a time specified? No.
I don't think so.
You're supposed to. But, so go ahead. You can go ahead and open it.
Okay. Are you guys ready?
What time is it?
6:20.
6:21.
So do you expect public comment?
I don't.
No, one was here the last two times they were here.
So I really don't wanna prolong this, but hopefully it'll still be open at 7:00.
Okay.
Okay. If not, you can table it until 7:00 and then at 7:01, you can close it.
Okay.
You guys will go there?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the, why is it 7:00?
Well, we. You're on the agenda for 7:00. Yeah, we started the meeting at 6:00, but it was, it was never specified what time. For your, the other two public hearings were specified for 7:00, but yours wasn't. Can I see the agenda? Can I see your agenda real quick? What does the agenda say?
6:00 PM.
So, yes, so I guess I, oh, no, it does say 7:00.
For the other two.
No, so it doesn't say 7:00. You're right. You're right. It doesn't say 7:00. So we're fine.
You were fine for theirs?
Yeah.
It's just the other two we have to wait for 7:00.
The other two you have to, yes.
Yep. So we'll take theirs.
So, thanks. All right. So Agenda Item Number 2, we have a public hearing, Site Plan Review for 2-4 Bedford Street upon the application for Site Plan Review and Approval submitted by Twin Boys LLC for Proposed Contractor Base Presented by Zenith Consulting Engineer, Possible Vote. This has been continued to this evening. We do have a set of drafted conditions from Town Council. Thank you, Amy, for getting that together. I guess it's been sent over to you sometime this afternoon. Have you received the draft conditions?
Yep.
Yes, we did have an opportunity to take a look at that draft decision.
All right. Did you have any questions or anything that you wanted to go over?
Oh, for the record, we need your, introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you. Yep. So my name is Matthew Kasta.
Are you recusing?
How's it going?
No, you should just make an announcement that you are recusing.
Oh, yeah. I'm recusing myself from 2-4 Bedford Street, John Cabral.
So my name is Matthew Kasta. I'm an attorney with an office at 73 Washington, Washington Street in Time. Here on behalf of the petitioner. Nick Filozzo, Twin Boys LLC.
All right. So you had a chance to go over the conditions. Did you have any questions?
We did. I mean, if the board's satisfied with the information that it has and it doesn't feel that it needs any additional information, we can represent that we've seen the draft decision and found it to be satisfactory. And one interest that my client has is just that if the board went to vote, it would specifically vote to adopt the conditions as provided in the draft decision that the board has in front of it.
Did anybody from the board have any questions?
So is this as of this afternoon, this document?
Yes.
Because there was an update, right?
Right, yes. So you should have the one that has 18 conditions. Because I added, I think I added two. And the date too on number one was, yeah, the date on number one should be fixed, so, yeah.
So, Madam Chair, just very quickly, if I could just have two minutes just to very quickly go over this and then we can go ahead. Apologies.
While he's ringing, I just had a quick question.
No, go ahead.
Just a quick question. If the town does not have a town planner at the time, who should be notified?
The planning, the planning clerk. Hopefully we will have someone in that position soon enough.
Okay. Thank you.
If the board, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but if the board was inclined to read the conditions, even though there's 18 of them, we wouldn't be opposed to that.
Did you wanna do that?
I don't think it would hurt.
That way we can go over it.
Clarity on the record.
Yep, that's fine.
All right. So I'm not gonna read any of the history or background. I'm just gonna go through the conditions. Starting with number one, the improvements, facilities, amenities and alterations shown on the site development plan titled Twin Boys Business Park dated December 5th, 2023, revised September 24, 2024, last revised April 15th, 2025, prepared by ZCE are incorporated as requirements and conditions of this approval. Number two, the conditions of the site plan approval shall be added to the final set of approved plans submitted to the board for signatures. Number three, prior to a building permit issued, the applicant shall submit and receive approval of a water connection application from the Lakeville Select Board. Number four, the applicant shall submit a check in the amount of $5,000, which will be held in a 53G account to pay for the required inspections prior to any site work occurring on the property or the issuance of a building permit. Number five, all required sedimentation and erosion controls shall be in place prior to the commencement of construction. If required, a SWIP shall be submitted prior to the commencement of construction. The building commissioner shall be contacted for inspection prior to the commencement of construction. The best management and maintenance practices for the site shall be followed at all times, including after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the premises. Number six, construction of the site shall be limited to 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM Saturdays, and no work on Sundays or federal and state holidays. During construction, all local, state and federal laws shall be followed regarding noise, vibration, dust and blocking of town roads. The applicant shall at all times use reasonable means to minimize inconvenience to the residents in the general area. Number seven, all drainage facilities and associated structures, including pipe, roaming and seeding, shall be completed to the satisfaction of the planning board prior to the issuance of any building permit unless an appropriate surety is agreed upon, which is sufficient to complete the infrastructure. Number eight, the stormwater management system shall be functional regarding soil stabilization, riprap installed, basins, grassed, et cetera, prior to an occupancy permit being issued. Number nine, landscaping for the project shall be completed pursuant to the approved plans. Landscaping plants and trees are approved as a perpetual condition and any plant or tree that either dies or is not healthy shall be replaced at the applicant's cost without delay during the appropriate growing season. Deer-resistant Leyland Cypress trees are to be used for the six-foot fir trees designated on the approved plans. Number 10, the applicant or successors are required to maintain the stormwater management system. Catch basins shall be cleaned at least yearly or more often if required in the operation and maintenance plan. Failure to maintain the stormwater management system will be considered a violation of this approval. In the event of a maintenance failure, the applicant or its successors shall be provided notice and reasonable opportunity to cure any such deficiency. Number 11, a pre-construction meeting shall be held with the contractor, the town planner and the building commissioner to outline items for inspections. The applicant shall notify the planning department in writing two or more working days prior to the following construction milestones or as determined in the pre-construction meeting for commencement of work on site, installation of stormwater management facilities, installation of trees and other landscaping features prior to the final paving of the parking lot and drives and completion of site work. Number 12, the applicant shall obtain a street permit, opening permit from MassDOT and/or the town of Lakeville where required. All work within the public right of way shall be properly cut, patched and sealed, infrared or overlaid with pavement as required by MassDOT and/or the town of Lakeville where applicable. Number 13, all signs installed on the site shall comply with Lakeville sign bylaws. Number 14, handicap access and. Number fourteen, handicap access and facilities shall comply with the American, with Disabilities Act and Massachusetts Architectural Access Board standards. Number fifteen, pursuant, pursuant to the October fifteen, twenty twenty four report by the town's peer reviewer Bealston Thomas, board of health review is necessary for the proposed septic design. Number sixteen, any substantial proposed changes from the approved site plan or additional site work deemed substantive by the town planner or building commissioner shall be presented for review by the planning board. The board shall determine if there is a need for a public hearing and new or modified site plan and shall then act accordingly on the changes. Approved revisions shall be illustrated on the plans and submitted to the board. Number seventeen, site plan approval shall lapse if work in accordance with this site plan approval has not commenced within twenty four months from the date of site plan approval, except for good cause. Number eighteen, a certified copy of this decision and the approved site plan shall be recorded in the chain of title for the property at Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. You got Dan? Did you have any questions?
All sounds good.
Okay. Jack?
I appreciate it. Number seven. How does, I'm explaining to me, guys, how did this just happen?
For what number?
Seven.
What about that?
Satisfaction of the planning board.
Where?
Number seven.
So ideally, we'll, when we have a town planner, they'll call and let them know that they're ready and that, that's one of those.
Yeah. I mean, someone has to go over.
Right, yes.
Well, sorry, I may. So that, I'm a little confused by that. So all the drainage, facilities, looming and seeding needs to be done before construction starts?
So that's why it says unless appropriate surety is agreed upon. So what we've done is have a surety in place of that getting done, depending on the time of year.
Why would we loom and seed before construction?
So, um, a lot of times the, um, a lot of times the drainage facilities are not as incorporated into the site plan. You know, they'll be in the, in the rear or something like that, but it's, it's a common, it's a common condition, so.
Would we be, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Would we be able to switch that to occupancy instead of building permit?
Um, so there's an, the, um, um, no, because the, the, um, occupancy permit is pursuant to the Mass State Building Code. It's not really tied to, we don't like to tie it to zoning. So the, the surety for looming and seeding is, is not substantial.
Effectively, that, that condition would require a surety.
Right. It's not substantial. It's not.
Because it's impossible to, because it wouldn't be possible to loom and seed before the building's built.
Yeah.
Right?
In this case, probably because of where your, where your facilities are, where your stormwater facilities are.
Yeah, you're not gonna do all the landscaping before you start building.
I'd prefer not to.
Yeah.
Right, but I don't want to pay for the surety either. It's not necessary. If we can somehow come up with an agreement for a change of number seven.
That's standard.
It is standard.
We can't remove looming and seeding at minimum?
It's standard because the, the board wants to make sure that it's done.
But we, that, okay.
Should there be a dollar amount in there now? Or, I mean, it, it doesn't, doesn't say who, who's agreeing with what.
Well, typically what we've done is have peer review give us a quote for what it, what it'll cost to complete and then that's the surety amount that we go with.
Because, um, there's also situations where the drainage facilities and associated structures, not all of them, including the pipe, not all of that can be done because of the construction and the sequence of construction.
Right.
So that's why we put it the way we put it, so it's up to the applicant how they want to do their construction.
But wouldn't eight cover that? The stormwater management system shall be functional prior to an occupancy per, be, permit being issued?
Right, except that, that is different than the infrastructure. We're asking for the infrastructure to be put in. And then we're asking for that, that it has to be functional.
I guess my, my confusion is the stormwater management system does include the infrastructure. It's all, it's all one system.
Correct, but it does, you can put in, so for example, you could put in your, um, you could put in your stormwater, uh, retention basin, but not put in the piping because you want to put your, you want to continue on with your construction and not do the piping. So you put in, let's just say you put in half of your stormwater facilities and then you provide a surety and then you finish it, you get your surety back and you get occupancy, you're done, so.
If I, if I could.
This is, the, this, um, the condition seven, um, was discussed at length with the building commissioner. I think you'll all remember. Which is why it's written the way it is.
What meeting was that?
Oh, this is the standard condition.
Oh.
Yeah, no, not your, not your project, right.
Just, he does not want us.
To tie it, to tie that, because of the fact that when people do construction, they can do, they don't have to do all of the, all of the stormwater infrastructure up, up front. They can do some of it if they want to.
So then can we remove eight then? Because you don't like tie it to an occupancy.
No, because that eight has, it, it just has to, it has to be functional. So we're not saying, we're, it, it has to function. That is important. Why wouldn't you want it to function?
Well, in order for it to function, I need to put the pipe in and the structures from number seven, so.
I, I guess the idea, I know you've said we don't, we won't tie the conditions to occupancy, but number eight is, so I guess the.
No, number eight is that it functions, not that it's put in.
So the suggestion would be that maybe seven could be tied to occupancy, but, and that would be kind of ideal.
This was obviously one he's okay with, but not the seven, so that's.
That's correct, um, right, because just the way the buildings are located and the structures are located, it'd be very tough to do everything, then do the buildings. We, I think we can all agree looming and seeding, it's just unreasonable to do it at that time. So it's just, it's kind of not how everything works in construction, unfortunately.
I mean, yeah, I've got one other question and, and, you know, maybe it's a, a big can of worms, but it, it's his, you know, prior to issuance of a building permit, all this stuff happens. And I don't recall any project I was ever involved in where there was any construction of any sort that went on without a building permit being issued. I mean, you don't go over out there and turn over the first shovel full of soil without a building permit.
Well, they're gonna, they have to have the site plan review through planning board first. So that's, that's one of the conditions through site plan review now.
Yeah.
So.
But, yeah, but, uh, you know.
Yeah, so, so realistically, construction, to that point, construction won't commence till a building permit is issued.
Conditions have been worked out, so.
So this, this condition really requires a surety, is what it comes down to, I think.
Yeah.
I think because we wouldn't expect any construction to happen before a building permit, this condition really requires a surety to be in place. And so I guess the question is, is the surety based on looming and seeding or all, or all of the drainage construction?
I guess it depends on what is done up until when you're looking to get that in place.
Okay.
Or, or, you know, what needs to be done when the building permit gets issued.
Well, alright, so just to back up, we can start construction whenever we want because we don't.
Site work.
Site work. We can start that whenever we want then. Is that what I'm hearing?
Provided the, um, I think you have to, I, I, it's site plan, so you would have to wait the twenty days.
You could start with all the work that doesn't require a building permit. Is what it comes down to.
I.
If anyone wants to correct us on that assumption.
Well, I would be careful about N Ds and things like that.
The SWIP has to be done first, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just, I wouldn't say all, everything can be done. I would. But that's, that's on you, not on us.
So could we, what would a surety number be? What are we talking about for a number for this project?
I mean, that'd be based on what peer review would give us. Are you talking about, like, now without anything done?
Correct.
I'm, I'm a lawyer. I'm not an engineer.
Right, so we'd have to, we'd have to have peer review get out there and give us a quote for that.
Okay, peer review will be going back out there?
Well, in order to determine what's, what they would deem to be that, that figure that you're looking for.
But if we say we're complete, would they need to go out there? Would that be on the board to review or the town planner?
Yes, we will, we, we will look at the as bolt or have the peer review look at the as bolt.
You have construction estimates so far anyhow, don't you?
Uh, maybe.
I mean, if you pulled out those numbers and told us what they.
It would, it's around a hundred dollars.
Uh, for?
To do all of it, that's the quote we got.
Alright, so that's why we would get a peer review quote for it.
No, I wasn't talking about the peer review number. I was talking about the, the surety amount. If the surety amount is the cost of completing those, uh, that infrastructure and we're doing it, we're getting a surety right up front before you do anything, then it's the cost of the construction of that part of the work, which I would think you have a good idea what it is.
Um, yes, I'm just, I'm just trying to think in my head how this work can be completed, phased essentially like this. We'd start the, we would start the stormwater items first, stop, then do the buildings, then go back to stormwater. And that's just, just, I'm just trying to think about that. Because we're gonna have our temporary, we already have approval from conservation, so we have erosion control, everything up. So that's why I'm just concerned about number seven being based before we get a building permit. If that, if the board would be amenable to changing that to occupancy like number eight.
Well, we can't do occupancy, but we can do the surety.
Occupancy because?
Because we can't. Like Amy said, we just can't. This is, it's something that we've worked out over the years. That's why it is what it is.
Does it matter what type, does it matter what type of, uh, bond it is? Does it have to be, um?
It, it's usually so small that it's, it's, it's just a performance bond. I mean, you could even, I mean, honestly, I think that, um, I think, I think we've even seen just a cash bond that just sits in the account and then you get it back.
So it doesn't really matter whether it's like cash or from a, like a sure, a surety from a surety company?
No, it doesn't. It's, that, I mean, I would, I would argue that that's up to you because of eighty one U.
Who, we have to pay for the third party to review that? Is that correct?
Number four.
That's what that would be including.
Okay.
Would it be possible to have one minute to discuss with the other members of Twin Boys?
Sure.
Should we all go into a five minute recess?
Yeah, we might as well.
I got kept up?
Yeah.
Hmm? Um, I make a motion that we go into a temporary recess.
We have a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open the meeting back up?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So I, I hear everything you're saying. I, my final comment will just be, I know you can't tie it to occupancy, but number eight, stormwater management system, does include everything that we're putting up a surety for, so. If that's how it has to be, we just are not in favor of it, so that's what I'll leave.
Not in favor of it? As in?
We're not in favor of a condition. We don't like the condition.
Okay, but you're willing to deal with it? These are our, like Amy said, these are standard conditions that have, we've worked out over the past few years. And she did explain the difference between seven and eight.
Well, I, I heard her explanation, yes. I don't agree with it, but.
So it means that the, the building commissioner is okay with holding one, but not the other? If he's agreed to this saying, you know, I, I don't want to hold.
I mean, the condition is it adds costs.
I think, I think you closed it. Okay. I think he said, he's, he's expressed his opinion.
Okay. So.
Yeah, the, the concern is that it adds costs and, and we just don't understand why it couldn't be tied to occupancy. The building inspector is the zoning enforcement officer. This is the permit he has in hand, just like all of the, so if one of the requirements is some, that something's done before occupancy, it's, it's, from our perspective, it's totally within his authority and jurisdiction and power to hold, to, to hold that to account at the time of occupancy, like condition eight, so.
Madam Chair, am I, um, on page one?
Mm-hmm.
Did we, um, it says at a regularly scheduled meeting on six, I have, I'm gonna put in six twelve. I just was, um, I had missed the last meeting. There was, it's my understanding there was no quorum. So this is the only public meet, the only public.
So it, it was opened on May twenty second.
Okay, so I will, but no, um, but was there any testimony taken on May twenty second?
No.
So I'll indicate that it was open on five twenty two and I'll put in friends as I normally, you know, no testimony taken.
Okay.
And then, um, and then I think that you can go to, um, the decision, which, um, per your norm, the decision section, um, indicates that, um, this is for site plan review only. Um, but if any other board, committee, commissioner or department requires a change in the plan or said change requires variance for their particular boards, committees, commissions or departments approval, the applicant shall notify the planning board, who will review the change and determine if the applicant needs to return to the board or revise the plan. Um, so that is in there and, um, with that, I think that you could take the vote.
Okay.
And I will change where it says the regularly scheduled meeting, May eighth. That's wrong. I will put that as six twelve.
Alright, would someone like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Did you ask if there was public comment?
Oh, is there any public comment?
Okay, um, I make a motion that we close the, uh, public hearing for two and four Bedford Street.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And would someone like to, motion to approve with the enclosed conditions as drafted, um, with the dates as Amy will be inserting? Okay, we have motion in a second. Jack, that was a second or?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Uh, Will got aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Hey, you okay, Jack?
Yeah.
As you can expect.
Okay. Motion carries?
Was it, was it three to one or four to?
It was, Jack, I think that was a yes.
Yes, yeah, sure.
So that was four to, four to zero?
Yep.
Five?
Nope, four.
Aye, five, no.
Oh, because Jack, John, I'm sorry.
Four.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three, we have a public hearing. Special permit for one sixty Bedford continued to this evening. Request for a special permit under section two seventy dash seven point four, number twelve, to allow a commercial parking facility possible vote.
Let me look. I'll pull it up.
The applicant has requested to continue until June twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Amy, are you available for that evening?
Um, what day?
June twenty sixth.
I am not. I am not here. I'm away.
I'm sorry. Is there anyone else that could? This is the one sixty Bedford that's been.
Oh.
Do you want to push it to the next one?
Um, well, so they, they've requested this continuance because they've continued to conservation's meeting, which is the Tuesday prior to ours. I don't know, is there anybody? Nobody's been, uh, from K P's been attending?
No, they, they were involved at the select board level.
Okay.
And, um, the person involved at the select board level is a licensing person, not a land use person.
Okay.
So can we move it to the following meeting?
They signed a request, but they requested it for twenty six.
Um, what is the applicant bef, what is the application before you?
Special permit for, uh, parking.
Okay, so it's a special permit and it's been opened?
Mm-hmm.
So technically, there is no limit for your review until you close it and then there's ninety days. You have to make a decision within ninety days, so.
We can open it, so even if we.
So you could continue it to the hearing after that, even though they requested it? You know, I, I think that this board clearly almo, almost always, you know, um, meets the requests of applicants, but you don't have to.
Okay, so the following, the following meeting is July tenth. the following meeting is July tenth. Um, are you available on that date, Amy?
Take out my paper calendar. That I still use, um.
Wrong one?
I might not be, but, um, it's, um, I'm, I'm, I have something penciled in. Um, I can, yeah, you can do it to July tenth.
Okay.
And I can, um.
Do we?
Have somebody come?
Well, we're still gonna continue until next meeting, right, for them? Or do we go to the tenth?
Well, like she just said, we can continue it to July.
Yeah, you continued it to tonight. They requested a further continuance, and so you can continue it to July tenth.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to continue one sixty Bedford Street to July tenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item number four, public hearing, site plan review for nineteen Main Street continued to this evening upon the application for site plan review submitted by C D Dankwitz Realty Inc. for the construction of a proposed mixed-use retail in business development comprised of two buildings and associated site improvements. The applicant has also requested continuance along to the next available meeting. Did she, she did specify the twenty-sixth, I believe.
Okay.
Um, that one, we're still going through peer review, so I don't see why we can't, um, continue it to June twenty-sixth.
Sure, I'll make a motion to continue nineteen Main Street to June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, seven P M.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, and actually, I wanted to.
Were we supposed to wait till seven?
What is it?
As long as you still have your meeting at seven, if somebody comes in, you can inform them that all you did was continue it, no testimony.
Okay.
Sorry.
I did notice the time.
Okay, thanks, I didn't.
I didn't think that was gonna take longer.
I did think that was gonna take a lot longer.
Um, and actually, specific for you, Amy, um, I can jump around down to the one that we had a question for you about, um, ADU forms and fees. Uh, so number eleven, site plan review, ADU form and fee back in May, we actually looked at, uh, a number of different towns and what they've done for ADU, site plan review applications. Um, they have a, a fee associated with it as well, and we discussed a fee, um, as well as taking our existing site plan review and whittling it down.
Yep.
For the ADU. Have, have you had a chance to figure what can, Kathy?
Yep, I did.
Okay. So what do you, what do you think? Is it?
No, I think it's a great idea. Um, actually, I think it's a great idea to, um, I'm just pulling it up, to definitely to whittle it down. Um, because, you know, a, as you, as you know, the, um, the review for an ADU is going to be much, much, much smaller. Um, it's gonna be not a lot of heavy lifting, I, I really, I don't anticipate, so, um, so, um, I mean, I, I thought that, I thought that it was fine. Um, did you want, um, were you looking for me to comment on more revisions or? Um, so, so for example, um, you know, one of them, um, you have, um, you know, you have the nine full-size contact prints folded, I don't know if you need that for an ADU, because you also have the eleven by seventeens. Um, that was just something, you know, it's just, and again, this, this is all stuff that it's completely up to you guys. Um, you know, um, those are things that are in your control, you know, things like, um, things like the copy of the deed and the, the three hundred feet, that, you know, a butter's within three hundred feet, that is required, so. You know, that's nothing that you can, um, you can take away for this one. Um, and then the other one is, um, you know, the, having, there's, there's a question as to having a registered professional engineer, professional, um, surveyor, registered landscape architect. Um, some, some boards don't require that for smaller projects. I, I can't, I think it's a good idea. Um, because you wanna make sure that, you know, for example, you wanna make sure that the ADU is going to be it within the proper setbacks, things like that, so I, I do think that's still probably a good idea and should stay as, as you have it, you know, staying. Um, and then the rest are really just the, you know, the plan requirements, um, the written narrative. I thought it was fine.
Okay, so number twenty, I know that was another thing that we had checked with town council. Um, so yes, a written narrative and waivers addressing each required requirement and Lakeville Town bylaws.
Yeah, that's fine. That, that's not a lot of heavy lifting.
Okay.
Um, I guess, and I, the other thing, I didn't understand thirty-three. Um, which is applicant has submitted a letter of intent to take land out of chapter ninety-one to the Board of Selectmen and the Assessors Office.
So that's, that was something that we included as like an FYI to the board if there's a project that's taking land out of chapter.
Oh, okay. But that's not, is that not, that's not required, right?
It's not gonna be applicable, so I guess maybe it should say if applicable?
Yeah, yeah, something like that, that would be better, yeah.
Alright, so, so other than that, you like what you see? It's all good?
Yep.
Alright, nice. We worked that one out, um.
What, what's the fee to be determined?
So we ta, I think one we looked at was fifty, one was a hundred and one was two fifty, and then.
That one was more than that too. That one was like, like four hundred bucks or something like that.
Was that what it was, one?
It's low, yeah.
So then our A and R, as it is to create one lot, an extra lot is two fifty for that application. Right, isn't that what we said?
If you change the lot lines.
Change the lot lines, two fifty. Does two fifty sound reasonable for a site plan review application for ADU? If it's modeling?
What middle barrel is, right?
Yeah, the mo, the middle barrel is two fifty.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah?
It has, yep, it has to be reasonable.
Is that what?
Under. Yeah.
Okay. So if everyone's in agreement, two fifty?
Fine.
Okay. Do we have?
And do you, um, do you happen to know? Um, do you set your own fees or do you have to have your fees approved by the select board?
We've been able to set our own.
Okay.
Yep, um. Do we have to hold a public hearing now? That's what they don't recall.
I think only if you're, if you're putting it into the rules and regulations.
Okay, so now that it's.
When you go through that final process.
Okay, but we can just update it. So there's no vote on this tonight, but we'll get a final draft maybe, or? And put in the fee and take a vote next meeting? Or, cause I know that people wanna move forward with this.
Yeah, I do have someone waiting for that.
So. Yeah, we don't have, so I guess we could, we could take a vote and ratify the vote at the next meeting?
Yeah.
That way we can move forward?
Sure.
Alright, so someone wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to make the, uh, make a motion to make the changes as stated to the application for site plan review for ADUs? And then for review and vote, possible vote next?
Well, no, um.
Make the change, you mean the extra change?
And to accept the fee.
To accept the fee? Okay, to accept the fee.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, and we'll put that back on next agenda to ratify. Vote. Okay. And are you gonna, Kathy, just to keep it straight, are you gonna add like maybe ADU at the, like?
Yes.
Yeah, so we know, okay. Alright, um. I think that's all we need you for, Amy.
Okay.
Wait, wait.
Oh, no?
No.
What, what?
Come on, Kathy, what else? Oh, the covenant.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, um, what was the question on the covenant? Because I didn't understand, but to be quite honest with you.
So we had that on.
And it's the two years.
Yes, so is that like a standard that would go, so? Now the two years would be up in August, so how does that work? Would they have to vote to extend that?
Okay, yep, that's a change to the covenant.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so just, just to be clear, we're actually discussing right now administrative update, agenda item number twelve, the third bullet point. Um, in regards to the Lakeville Country Club, um, they did, they found, or Kathy found that there was no covenant filed, like it was specified in the conditions, so now that we have a standard covenant, it, it references a two-year, um, timeframe. So Kathy just asked Amy if, if that applies, so yes, the, the two-year will apply and they'll have to come back to the board to, to have that.
Oh, wait a second, so this covenant that you gave me was dated twenty twenty-two? November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. I thought this covenant was in place.
Oh, no, I, I did not, that's like the draft one.
Oh, okay, okay, so that changes everything, okay?
Yeah, that's why the question didn't make sense.
That's why the question didn't make any sense, okay, okay, I see. Um, so, um, for the time period, you'd like to give them more than two years from endorsement because it's already, two years from endorsement is up. Obviously, it's up in August, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I guess, um, yeah, I, I guess, push that, I, I would move that to three years. Change that to three years.
So the covenant?
Yes.
Yeah, cause it wasn't in the conditions, so.
Okay, yes.
So at least now it's in the covenant?
Yeah, it should be somewhere, definitely, yeah.
Okay.
So just as a question, is that usually in, like an approval, a timeframe?
So, um, more recently, I think planning boards are putting, um, completion dates in their subdivision, um, in their subdivision decisions. Um, it's, it's important to have it in the covenant. Um, but it is important to have it in, it's also important to have it in the subdivision decision because, um, you know, if you don't have a co, you know, like in a situation like this where there's not a covenant until now, um, but, um.
But it was part of the requirement, it just wasn't filed yet.
Yeah, um, correct, but, um, I would suggest that, um, that subdivision decisions have a completion date.
Okay.
It, it helps for enforcement purposes.
Right.
And is that typically two years or?
Yeah, it is actually, um, and, um, and then, you know, if, there could be language about, you know, if there's an, an extension is necessary, come back or something like that. And then when we do covenants, we always ask for the plans and the decision. And we make sure that the decision, the covenant matches the decision.
Alright, so was there something else regarding that one? It's just that covenant?
I don't know if you just wanted to discuss what's going on with it.
Um.
Thought Derek was gonna be here, but.
Oh, right, so, um, the Lakeville Country Club owner, he's, um, looking to move forward with the subdivision plans, so that's why Kathy, you know, found that the covenant was not, um, there. So what else, so, I mean, I know you're, you're the one that has spoken to him directly, do you wanna?
So just, um, I guess there's a problem with the pole, which Liz was gonna comment on, she just didn't have a chance to get that complete, and she was gonna advise the board if, I guess, if she felt that it was a substantial change or not.
Mm-hmm, yeah, there's a electric pole in the roadway, and so now they're moving, I think it's moving the roadway out of the way of the pole. Because they couldn't move the pole, because the pole was.
Yeah.
Um.
Close to a solar farm?
Was part of the solar farm, so because of that, um, we're just waiting for a determination from the peer review whether or not it has to come back before the board.
Yeah.
To further review, so, because anything substantial has to come back to the board, so. Once we have that, it may or may not come back to our board.
Yeah, I was a little confused on how far it was, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so is that everything that we had for Amy?
Are you sure this time?
She's starting her car already.
Yeah.
Am I supposed to go with that one or?
Yes, see?
Yeah, it was all easy stuff.
Okay.
Alright, so.
Next one.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
We'll see ya.
Monday, Rocky Woods?
No, that's one of the ones I can't make, I'm in Duxbury Town Hall. Yeah, okay, yes, I will see you all in, in July.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, moving on, agenda item number five, zoning bylaw review advisory committee or ZBRAK, discuss and possible vote. I think you all, um, discussed this last meeting, uh, with the charges and, and the member composition, and they're looking for one planning board member. Cause ZBRAK, I know myself, I got CPC, David, you got Serped, um, Jack, you're a master plan. Dan and John, looking at you.
Hey guys, standing step up here.
So.
Josh Frost?
Well, I mean.
Which one?
It, it should, so this shouldn't be a lengthy commitment, I think it's gonna be more of like a, a formation and then address what you wanna address and then dissolve?
Yeah, I think that was the one I sent out that Tracy was thinking it might be once a month?
Right.
Is that the one?
I think so, yeah, so they think it's gonna be once a month, but they don't know what day or time yet. So I don't know if one of you has interest. I think it's, you know, it's important to have a planning board member on this because they're going through the zoning bylaw language and if there's anything that needs to be communicated back and forth, you know, it'd be good, um.
Is starting now or is it starting after July, was it? Cause one-year term expires in July thirty-first of each year?
Yeah, so.
So it's after that?
I, I think they've begun, um, making the appointments, but I don't think they've completed making the appointments for that committee.
I can do it if you don't have, if you don't have the, I don't mind doing it.
Okay.
I'll do it.
John?
Yep, I'll do it.
You do it?
Alright.
These two guys will, then I'll do it.
Well, I think, I mean, John, you'd probably be great on that, cause, you know, engineering background, you'll be able to, and you.
Sure.
You've been on planning board long enough to know, you know.
Yeah.
What we look at too, so. Alright, would someone like to?
Um.
Much to, much to.
Yeah.
Willum?
I make a motion.
We're not appointing, we're recommending him.
Recommending? Gotcha. Um, I make a motion to recommend, uh, John Cabral for the, I'm trying to find the official, zoning bor, zoning bylaw review advisory committee, um.
Motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, John.
Thanks. I'll do something.
Alright, number six, associate member, we are still looking for letters of interest, there has been some, a couple, um, submittals, one inquiry. Um, we'll probably put it on our next agenda to, um, review that. So give it another couple weeks and then I know you all are attending all the time, might as well, throw your hat in the ring. Um, but so that would be another thing where we'll, we'll review, we'll make a recommendation, and then the select board would make the appointment. Um, yeah, agenda number eight, we have reviewed the following zoning board of appeals petitions. Zoning board is meeting at the same time as we are right now. Um, they just have started. But we can still send any comments, questions, concerns, if we have any, about these items, um. Since we did work on that accessory structure bylaw, I think it, it is a good idea, and Kathy kind of said, you know, as an option, do we wanna, you know, review this to keep an eye on how that accessory structure bylaw is working, do we need to keep an eye and tweak it or go back to review it again, um, if it, you know, is it working, is it not working, how is it working? Um, here's a few, a couple good examples, I'd say, we have one, uh, for Sixth Village Road. And they're looking to add on to an existing garage, which is, is making it over the allowable. Um, a thousand square foot accessory structure. This one, I mean, I think it, for me, I think it's a good practice because this is a side street off of a side street off of a minor street. I, I think it's probably a good thing to let the, the butters come out and if they have a concern with the location.
So yeah, so the, the fourteen, so they adding? So their total net, their total, I guess, will be fourteen forty-four, right? Is that what they're saying? Cause I don't know the size of the existing garage, but it's a pretty big garage to begin with, and they're adding on to it.
Alright, I think it did show dimensions on one of the.
I thought it did too, but I didn't see it.
No, it's the.
Forty-eight, but. Yeah, does it have dimensions on it?
Oh, does it not?
Sixty-two. Three twenty-seven. Three twenty-seven. Actually, no.
Well, I mean, it says that they're looking to, they were asking to build a fourteen hundred forty-four square foot structure.
Are they adding that on top of what they already have there?
That I don't know because it sounds like it because they're asking to build that in addition to not.
Which I guess it doesn't really matter because they're going above the one thousand. So it doesn't matter if they're building twenty-five hundred or if it's fourteen hundred or whatever it is. It's still large, it doesn't really matter. I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it changes the whole dynamic of it. I was just curious. Not that I'm trying to be a stickler for, but. I mean, it doesn't, I don't think it's gonna. But again, like you said, I mean, I guess the abutters would be right because that guy. To the left of them, they're obviously gonna have to clear land. So I don't know what, you know, weird.
Right.
It comes back from, but I mean, doesn't, either way, it doesn't matter.
Yep. So I mean, I guess it'll be interesting to see how how it goes with ZVA and. How they deal with these. Anybody have any specific? Comments that they think we should add to that one?
No, yeah, just, yeah. Right, if they could just confirm that what's the total, total.
Of the current.
Of the.
Total net, yeah, of the combined accessory.
Right. I mean, typically, we don't send comment about residential, but I think, you know, just as, since there's a newer bylaw. The next one is sixty-seven Loon Pond Road. And that's a proposal for a three-bedroom dwelling located above a garage to be used for agricultural purposes. A special permit is required as this is a residential use slash structure located in the business zoning district. This one was very interesting to me because. I know in that area, it was purposely zoned business in the hopes of preventing. Large amounts of residential building to go in in that location. And I I thought that from what. I had looked at.
Yeah, so.
This was.
They're calling it a proposed dwelling, not a garage. On their plans, it's a proposed dwelling. So is it a house?
That's, that was my question. So it says, it shows like on the locust plan, basically, where it's, they're calling it the overall plan. It's showing existing dwelling, but it's showing that it's a separate lot. But. Has it been A and R? I guess I'd. I would have. Questions about. Is it?
No, yeah, it says right here.
Lot area is twenty-nine.
Yeah, it says right there, seventy-seven, yeah, so.
But then. It's only showing seventy thousand, seventy-seven thousand square feet. So it almost seems as though.
And their plans say proposed three-bedroom dwelling with a deck and a, with two decks. And an overhang open to below.
Right.
It's like, believe a four-bedroom. Is that a four-bedroom septic?
Yeah, so I guess I'm I'm confused because of the locust map. It almost looks as though it should be an A and R. Where they're dividing, you know, the property into this.
Well, there's already an existing house. Right on, is that with that existing house, that part of that property? What property are we part of?
So if you look in here. It shows, because it shows right here, twenty-nine plus or minus acres. So I'm assuming that's this whole thing, you know, over here. But then this is showing just seventy-seven thousand square feet broken off.
Right, but they're saying that there's already existing house and you can't have two. So that's, they're trying to pull the second house on the property and calling it a garage.
Well, that's why it looks like existing dwelling and now they're calling, yeah, they're creating this garage with a.
Secondary house.
With a house on top of it, which, I mean, now with. With ADUs allowed, it just. It wouldn't be as large as they're.
Three-bedroom.
Yeah, it wouldn't be as large as they're looking for.
So like, what's our recourse here? So I mean, is it not?
It's business zone, so they.
I don't know, like.
They shouldn't be able to build a.
But that'd be, that'd be a zoning enforcement issue, right?
Yeah.
So are we, are we, like, are we, with these, are we doing comments or are we just doing?
I mean, if you want to submit a comment, it just will go into the record at this point.
Right.
Unless you wanna like.
Leave here and go there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if they're hearing it right now, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, the sign one is first, so that might go for a while or or not, like you would never know.
I'm not, I mean. I'll say if if we're picking it up, I'm hoping someone else.
Right.
Above our pay grade is picking it up as well.
It's also another instance where it's close to the pond, too. So I know there's a lot of concern about the building. Near the water and the pond, so maybe there'll be concern from other abutters. Uh, the next one is Shane and Rachel Collins to upon acquit drive. This one is applying for a special permit due to proposed garage square feet being three hundred and four square foot over the allowed amount of a thousand.
Yeah, see, that was, yeah.
So. This one is, I think this is the one looking. For the. Oh, yeah.
This is, this is a bonus room over a garage. This is what I think of when they, when they say that, not.
Right, the bonus room.
Dwelling in a three-bedroom, but I didn't see the garage in the other one either, though, so. But, no, yeah, this one seems fine. I have no comment on this one.
So once again, it's over the allowed. I guess it'll be curious to see what zoning board says or does with these if.
This one, I have no problem on this one.
Because it's interesting, once again, you know, ADUs are allowed, but this is.
Yeah, this one's just a bonus. I think they just built a, I think they just built a room above it.
Over the allowable. So is this just, I don't know, a way of getting around ADUs? I don't know.
I don't think this one is because there's no.
What you said, you're gonna set a bad precedent, right?
Well, it's not for us. It's not a precedent for us. It would be for zoning board and and they, they do deal with these things that come up. So I'll be, it'll be interesting to see, because they they deal, like. Even before we had accessory accessory structure bylaw that limits it to a certain size, they've already been looking at things that. Were, you know, in the setbacks or.
And just so, I don't know exactly which ones, but the majority of these applications, the Board of Health did comment that they were not to be used as dwellings.
Alright.
No water, no sewer.
For the, for the, for what? For like this one?
Yeah, these structures.
What about the other one before?
Yeah, the one that's asking for the three-bedroom.
That one I don't know.
With the actual septic land?
But I know these, these garages.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and this garage is. There doesn't, I mean, this one doesn't, there's no bathroom in there. There's not, I mean, you can't, someone may, you know, someone may sleep there, but it's not a dwell, I wouldn't say the dwelling.
Yeah, but like, you know, same, same, they can kind of just trying to go around the rules and come back to it in a different direction.
Right.
The Board of Health is looking at that also.
Well, that's good to know. Uh, the fourth one is for Faria at twenty-seven Kingman Street. Requesting to build a forty by sixty steel garage that is over the maximum aggregate of accessory building size per minimum lot area. Setbacks on each side of proposed building exceed required amount. So they. I'm not sure what these percentages, that's three point nine. See, at first, when I had read it, I was like, is that a three point or is it thirty-nine? But no, it's a point for sure. Looking at this.
So it's the lock coverage, right?
Right, so it's still well under the lock, uh, lock coverage allowed. But it is looking to build a large accessory structure. Looks like they'll have to take down some trees. It's very large.
Bigger, oh, I guess the lock coverage.
So. I mean, for myself, I think. As long as residents have a chance to show up and if there's a concern, then they can voice it. And if not. I don't have a problem, I guess, with people building on their own property. I, but I guess it's up to zoning board to. Make whatever determination they make. It is big, yeah.
If I was an abut, if I looked up, I saw, looked up my window, it's. That.
But it is outback, so I guess, like, because I think there's a difference between. Like a cul-de-sac area. And then one of the more main streets. And I know South Kingman's not a main street by any means, but it is close enough to county street, what county is a main street, but. I guess it's, I I do like that the. Abutters and neighbors have a chance.
And a butter come in to check out the plan, yeah.
Yeah.
For one of these.
So that's good. As long as it's kind of making, given the opportunity so that it's not after the fact, wondering.
Yeah, we don't get people.
Outrage, so. I guess I'm satisfied not sending a comment unless you all do want to. Yeah? What do you think?
So for the, the lock coverage, when they say the three percent, is that the structures that are covering the lot? Or is that like?
I guess. I don't know where those figures came from, though. It doesn't.
It's based on their plan. I mean, not that I'm just splitting his, but. Their, their garage looks twice the size of their house.
Right. Alright.
So. Say that they went from three point nine to six point three, but I don't know, either way, I don't know, I don't know what that.
Right.
It's fine. I mean, again, they are, if you look at, they're, they're well wooded, so it's not like it's. Again, if the abutters have, like you said, the abutters have a chance to go in and at least see it, see what someone's putting in there.
Right.
It's dope, but that's, that's them.
Yeah, and it's just interesting. The well is right there, too, like back there, so. There must be a reason that the well is so far from the house.
Yeah, that's kind of interesting. That is pretty far.
I'm assuming Board of Health saying they can't put any bathrooms in there either, right?
Right.
I would think so. Like I said, I don't know exact, I think it was those, I know there were three.
Doesn't look, doesn't look like a building anyway. This is a, this is a garage anyways.
Yeah, and I, that's typical to, to comments I've seen from them, to just watching the meetings, that they'll.
That's what we do with Faria.
Comments. So are we good with this item or?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy, for adding these. For us to just kind of keep on top of or pay attention to. Agenda item number nine, approve the March twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and April ten, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review these minutes?
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, would someone like to make a motion? Or is there any changes?
Uh, no changes on my end.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for Thursday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Can I go?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes, okay.
Same with April tenth. I didn't see anything outstanding, so.
Alright.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes. For Thursday, April tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Article, uh, agenda item number ten, article fourteen, accessory apartment discussion, possible vote. So this is just something sort of after the fact, FYI, for town meeting. I don't know if you all attended, but.
We won the hundred?
Yeah, so John, John volunteered to read that article and of course, that was the one where we had to. Yeah.
Postpone indefinitely.
Thank you, postpone indefinitely.
For future meeting, not fall town.
You did a great job, John. I watched it on stage.
Watched it, called out. What's his name again?
Yeah, Bob.
Yeah.
It's alright. We knew what you meant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, well, so hopefully for fall, we can just do a search of the bylaw, make sure everything's been taken out, included. But we have it ready to go. Just add those extra items. I don't think the definition really matters, but the fact that it's in the use chart.
Yeah.
Would be concerning to take it out and then have it still, you know, allowed without a description of what it is.
Do we think that there's gonna be any more changes to this as we go forward into the fall, like any additions to this?
To this what?
Like. To this article or the?
So this is the excess, so, so because the state has.
The definition for.
Has ADUs, yep, as by right with site plan review. Our existing accessory apartment now is sort of redundant and it's more restrictive. Although the, you know, it has a little bit more of a dimensions allowed, but it has to be attached. It has to have the same, whatever, EGRs.
Right, yeah, I think it also. Because it says you can only have one accessory dwelling unit. So if someone had, if we remove it, then they can't try to skirt and do both.
Do, do, okay.
Right?
Right, but so you can have two ADUs, but one's by special permit. And and Title V still applies.
Yeah.
Wetland still applies, which is the same with accessory apartment. You still can't, if you have a three-bedroom septic, you have a two-bedroom house, you're adding a accessory apartment with one bedroom. Now you're, you'd still have to do the septic work in order to put an ADU. So you can't really.
Yeah.
Do both. It's you, it's probably a pick one and the ADU is less stringent, so that's why we.
Right, but the way this read before, the accessory apartments by, it's allowed by right, inter-residential.
Right.
Property. Okay. Thank you. Do we have to vote?
So this one. I'd like to get like a list for fall going because it's gonna be here before we know it. So I hate to say it, but.
So would this be part of the goals? Reviewing the goals again to make sure that this is a goal or is this?
So I think we should, I think we should do it.
Yeah.
Because we have ADU. So ADU's already passed, so this is redundant.
Yep.
Put it to town meeting. If people want to keep it for some reason, then let them speak to it, but nobody's really showing up to.
Right.
Speak to it and.
Speaking of goals. Has Rodney Dixon reached out to you about having you?
Yes, and actually, at the end, I'll, I'll just kind of. Mention that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So right now, so article, so fall town meeting. We'll put the accessory apartment back on.
Mm-hmm.
And then when, if we get a town planner, we'll kind of go over a list of things for a fall town meeting that we wanna. That would be for me, ideally, like the first thing that we go over with town planner, we want to get X, Y, and Z. Not too much, but just something.
Right.
That keeps moving forward.
Very good.
Yeah, so we don't need to vote on that. Number eleven, I know we already took the ADU form and fee. We already talked about the fire station fee. We just have inspections left. Um, Kathy, did you, I know you said you were working on that. Did you?
I did not have a chance.
Okay. So that's really just a matter of. Doing what we've already talked about, whittling the downs and site plan review and adding those inspections into it.
Yeah, and then I was gonna reach out to Beals because some projects do, you know, go through them, so it would make sense that they would also take that aspect of it after. So if they were gonna do that, so say they peer reviewed that project. For that, after that, construction inspections, it would make sense for them to do it if they, they review the project, they're familiar with it.
Like in general?
In general.
Yeah.
So I was gonna reach out to, to them as well.
Okay.
So hopefully by the next meeting, they will have something to present to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Alright, so we'll just keep that on for next meeting. Agenda item number twelve, we've got the open space plan. Okay, me being me. Thank you guys for saving this. Because, I finally read it. And I did find a few things, so. It's great, though. Like, I want to start off by saying. Thank everybody who got this to this point. I know it's been years, like years now, that they've been working on it, working on it, working on it. I know Joan Morton's put a lot of time and energy into it. Even, I mean. My good friend, Mike Schroeder, rest in peace. She had been working on it and I'd love to see, and even like a dedication to her in the back, like. Something under like comments, resident comments, because I know residents can submit comments, maybe I'll do it personally. But so anyways. There is a lot in there and I think that it's, it's really great. It's a great plan. Look if you're glutton for punishment, for reading, like all through this, this town-related stuff. But. I mean, just for land use boards, because that's when we talk about being on the same page and collaboration, communication, because we have our housing production plan and. And master plan and, you know, priority protection and development areas, like they reference our, the new PPA and PDA areas in this. Um, so anyways, so going down my little list, page six. Um, they mentioned that the one million gallons from New Bedford is available, unfortunately, just in speaking with Andrew, the. just in speaking with Andrew, the town administrator, that's gone.
Yeah.
Um, so, I think that should probably be pointed out. Page 23, the zoning map that they have, it doesn't show anything about the water resource protection or floodplain, but it is in the reading, so I know, like, with the zoning map, we had had that Bridgewater State student.
Is that the federal one, or the state one, the flood zone map?
So, it's the one that's just over the, you know, talks about what, it's over the town, and that it goes by a certain rate map.
Yeah.
Rate map. Um, it's mentioned in the wording, but it's not shown on the map.
Okay.
Um, page 25, it references the Howland Road Farm, and that recently sold. So, that's a big one to maybe include in there, rather than saying that it's a working farm.
Yep.
Um, page 25, DOD, it mentions the Development Opportunity District twice, actually, so on page 25 and on page 26, and that one was removed, I think it was, I think it was 2022. If you're right. So, that, I think they should take any reference to DOD out. Page 26, they call it Upland Circle, which we know now it was changed to Front Yard Circle. Page 28, it talks about the cell tower being a yearly income for the town, but I know that the cell tower, I believe they did a, I think it was a 20-year lease, I'm not 100% certain, but I know that they either sold it, or they did a lease where the town got...
Which one?
A large amount. It was, it was the town cell tower.
There's been a lot of them around here.
By, well, I'm pretty sure it's the same one.
I thought maybe other.
But, so I guess, so my question would be, I, I don't think we're still getting the yearly funding for it. I think it was a 20-year lump sum that came in to the town. Pages 49 through 52, it talks about lighting, and how like, planning board, they worked the planning board to come up with this lighting bylaw, and also on page 169, it talks about, um, their goals and what they want to do, and one of them is to explore lighting issues, and maybe review the lighting bylaw, which that's something to keep in mind, because it actually points out areas in town. So, it talks about the lighting over the town, and how like, these areas are good, and then there's some areas with bad lighting, I guess, like in the Pukoi area over there, I guess, the lighting. So, any, anything like that, where we can get information from open space and then use it, and when we have a project that might come before us.
Lighting, what, street lighting, or just...
So, talking about, so you know how we have the lighting requirements for it to be down facing, and you can't have the light trespass, so it talks about how you can look up and, like, that's why I said, 49 to 52, read those pages, it's really interesting. It talks about you can look up and see the Milky Way, and the different things that you can see from the town, because of the night sky bylaw that we have, and that not a lot of towns around have it. And it talks about how it helps with the migratory birds, and maybe we'll have more birds in this town because they're able to see where they're going. But I thought it was fascinating.
We always get updates about the hummingbirds, so...
Yeah, exactly, so, that wasn't something that I'd want to send as a comment, but just an FYI to us, you know, talking about lighting and how it pertains to planning board. And then also page 121, Ted Williams Camp, it lists off the other things that are there, and it's now the, going to be the home of the future fire station.
Sure.
And another thing at the end with the goals, it was, it talks about passing O S R D, and I know that was one of the things that we did talk about bringing back possibly in fall, because I know we've worked through it a lot, maybe just finalize that and get that to town meeting, let people vote on it. But, uh, so, in order for them to be approved, this open space plan, they have to have a letter of recommendation from this board. So, my thought would be, you know, send a letter, you know, thanking them for the good job, and we do have just a few comments or edits to request, but other than that, we would approve and recommend this plan. So, Kathy, do you want me to, like, just type up these few little page numbers and things, and then you can maybe use it, I don't know if we have a form letter, or something that you can put it into?
Lot of people.
Okay, yes, that'd be great, and then we can send it off as a recommendation.
Sure.
Because this, so the open space plan is tied to different grants, so now that we have this done, the town can utilize those grants, it's P A R C is one of them, so that can go to open space, parks, recreation, so different things in town that we want to look to get done, they can actually now apply for grant money and hopefully get it, because we haven't been eligible for, what, five, seven years? Yeah, so, um...
Great.
So, would someone like to make a motion to send over that letter of recommendation? Or we don't even have a vote, so we'll just send it, we'll, I'll type that up, I'll give it to Kathy, she'll send it over to Open Space, and Tracy, or whoever's.
Tracy's, yeah, Tracy was looking for it.
Okay.
Great.
If you guys are all okay with those.
Yeah, honestly.
Thanks for doing a review on that.
Sure. I, it was like, you know, saying hi to Mike Schroeder, you know, like, you could, like, all of the, so much of it, you could just hear her coming out of it, so, yeah, it was nice. Uh, the next item is rules and regulations, private road info, Kathy did do some digging.
Yeah, two of them, right, in the packet, plus the ones you gave us.
So, I've got the Randolph one.
Randolph?
Yeah.
Yep, the Ricka, Concord.
Gardner. Concord.
I don't know if they have Randolph.
No, Randolph was in the packet, original packet.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Those are the last two pages of the original packet.
Do you want the copy I have?
Oh, yes. Got it.
All right, so we've got, let's see, the Ricka, Randolph, Concord, and Gardner, right?
Good, like, good.
The Ricka.
Yeah, it's my wife.
Kathy, did you want to go over it, because you looked it up, or what do you think?
I mean, like, that was like a really, that was a tough search, because not, I couldn't find a town that had like specific, these are the regulations for, you know, private roads. But what I did find is some towns have like different standards, so like this one, like cul-de-sac, and what they're looking for, and where the changes are, so in like the pavement width, in the maximum grade or the minimum grade. So, I just thought it would be helpful for you to have some of, to look at those items of the things that you can change, make adjustments, and...
Yeah, and so, gosh, when is, um, Serpide meeting with us?
July 24, July 20, I think it's 24th, second meeting, yes.
Okay. All right, so this is good, like, we should like review this, bring some ideas back to July 24, when we're meeting with Serpide, so we can, you know, have something to kind of guide us, and... Yeah. Because even something like this, like, just like a breakdown, that makes it simple, when you have a chart, you know? Where it has, you know, your accepted street, and then your private, and then have the comparison. I feel like a chart is really easy and go-to for people to know what they're, you know, looking at. Even if, obviously, you want to break it down and have the explanation, but...
So, is the goal to have these standards, but also have a list of streets as well? And which, where do they fall in the standards?
So, right now, in our rules and regulations, it does break it down, it has like major, minor.
Yeah.
It has a couple breakdowns, but a lot of our roads are either state-owned or minor, you know, and town-owned. Like, so a lot of our town-owned roads are minor anyways, and then the private ways are even smaller. But what we want to do with the rules and regs is to have, so for new streets coming, you know, subdivisions coming to us, we want to have, if you want to be accepted by town meeting, you have to go the extra mile, you have to have all of these standards adhered to, so that...
Yep.
All along the way, because it says, you know, you have to have X, Y, and Z. And then, so, private ways, people are coming to us and saying, well, I'm not looking to be accepted, I just want a private way, so give me all these waivers, so I feel like we, instead of having like 20, I don't want to say 20, because we don't have 20 waivers typically, but I have seen, you know, we've seen 16, we've seen 13, we've seen a good number of waivers requested.
Plus all those.
If we're going to have waivers, why not have just different standards, so that we have consistency among those private ways? So, this one's not getting this, you know, waiver.
Something that we typically always do, and this is it, you know, we don't have to have many waivers, it was cut down the waivers, I guess.
Because we know the ones that we typically waive anyways, so why even include it, if, you know, but if we want to see...
Yeah, yeah. Like, something to put on, too, as a bargaining chip, to kind of give back one, to take another, to be a little more like the, you know, 18-foot wide road to...
Yeah, yeah.
But so, we should have standards, so that they know they can't just put in a 18-foot road and three houses.
Yeah, we don't want to sit, right, I don't think we want to sit the wrong person, because then the next developer will come on, and one concession is on.
Well, yeah, we've had it before, where an applicant was in here, wait, you just let them get away with that, why, why you let me get away with that? It's different.
Yeah, so hopefully, we'll come up with a set, something that, I mean, ideally, that works for everybody, I'm sure there's going to be different caveats that come up, but... Anything will be better than the 1987 version of the rules and regulations that we have right now, right?
So, is this something we want on the, did you say you want to do this for the fall?
So, we don't have to bring rules and regs to town meeting, all we have to do is a public hearing. So, we would have to, Kathy would have to advertise it, we'd do a public hearing, but Serpide, this is what we got the grant, for Serpide to go through and do the deep dive, so they're going to be doing the heavy lifting, we just have to tell them.
We have to give them some like guidelines by the 24th.
Okay.
Yeah, well, they're going to be here with us, so we'll be able to talk.
We lost a talking point for that, yeah.
Exactly, so, bring these back with you.
Yeah, we're supposed to go through these and identify some of the...
Yeah, if you like something in there, and you want to see it here, if it makes sense.
And do you think Serpide would have examples? I know, I know you tried hard to get these, Kathy, so, but I mean, you know, that...
They may have some.
They work with a lot of towns in this area, so if they've, yeah, if other towns have similar...
Okay, no, and I think this is a good way to streamline things, so, yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
This is all good, yeah, thanks, Kathy, this is great.
All right, we did cover the other items under that. Uh, our next meeting is June 26, 2025, here at the police station, just an FYI. Um, I didn't hear back from everybody about the master plan meeting, so I just told Rita that I'll attend on July 21st.
Is that a Monday?
Because I got too soon to do the June, so that ends up being the Monday. But if anybody wants to attend, let me or Kathy know, and then we can post for the meeting, so we'll, if we have a quorum.
If we have three or more, right?
Yeah.
It's a brief meeting, I mean, Dixon doesn't like to have long meetings.
She said they just want to know what our goals are, and our focus, and how it pertains to the master plan, so...
You should be speaking, you're the one that's going to speak to that.
Well, I mean, right now, my goal is hire a planner, that's the main goal right now.
Yeah, but they're looking for, they're looking for open plan, ADU, all that other kind of stuff, that's what I give up on.
Yeah.
So, because Dixon's going to say hiring an associate is all it's going to do.
That was a goal under master, under the master plan, it was a goal, but it's a goal that's come on and off and on and off.
Yeah, but I think he needs to see and hear all the things that we've done so far.
Right, well, we have our own planning board goals, but unfortunately, we've had such a heavy lift in all these meetings, we haven't been able to get to it, so...
Yep.
Pushed off a little. But if we have a town planner, then we'll get back to addressing that, and prioritize what we have to prioritize.
So, what's it, July 21st?
July 21st.
Okay, so that's a Monday, what time?
Uh, 6:30, I believe.
Okay.
Is that correct, Jack?
Yep.
Usually, he's at 6.
Is it 6?
Uh, let me check my calendar.
Okay.
Dixon likes to do it at 6.
I'll, um, try to get there.
It's a very, you know, it's an easy goal, really.
Is it here, at the police station?
Yeah.
7:20, 6 PM, you have the right shot, 6 PM. So, like I said, let Kathy know if she has to post for it, she has to post within, you know, 48 hours in advance, so give her, give her a week, please.
Yeah, I'll, I should be able to attend.
I said, I said, I heard 10:00, BF is 3, we'll know by then, anyways, we'll know by the next meeting anyways.
Yeah, so, all right, if we have any...
I have a question, too, that MBTA meeting that was July 23rd, is it going to be a joint meeting?
Speaking of community, the community rule...
Oh!
Really? You really hear it?
I don't even know.
Pretty loud.
All right, I'll check with Tracy on that one.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
Is, yeah, is it, is it worth lying, or...
I didn't know, I don't recall if there was going to be a quorum for that.
Okay.
And they were going to do a presentation?
Yeah.
I don't remember either.
It was a long, I, yeah.
Reusing the station.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Yeah.
Because it was what, there's 200 parking spots for the Cape Cod Flyer, is that right? And they want to do what with it?
So, that's not specified, that's why they're meeting with the town, to get input, so we'll see what they have to say.
Keep it as is.
This is for the...
Or a supermarket. We're going to need one with all the traffic heading out of town. All right, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we are adjourned.